The next item on the agenda, if you would, please stand with me for a moment of silence for the killings of the tragedy over the weekend on St. Helena Island. And after that, Reverend Williams will do the invocation and Mayor Protan McPhee to pledge of allegiance. Reverend Williams?
Hey, let us pray. Oh, Lord, as our community grieves, may we feel your hand of comfort in our lives, Lord, for all those who lost loved ones. God, we remember those who have left us. We pray for their families, that they will find peace, that this time of terrible tragedy is hard for each of us. God, may we put an end to senseless violence. May we turn to you in these times and feel the love of neighbor and the love of community. Lord, we thank you for Mayor Cromer and his service to the community. We thank you for each who serve on City Council. Mr. Mitchell and McPhee, Mr. Scalotti and Mr. Lipsitz. Lord, we thank you for their service as public servants. May they feel your leading and your presence in the decisions they make. God, we thank you for all the city officials who work to make this a wonderful place to live. God, we, in this time, pray for peace. Peace for all the world, peace for our town, the peace that comes from you, the peace that passes all understanding. God, in all we do, may you bless us and keep us. May you make your face to shine upon us, and be gracious unto us. May you lift up your countenance upon us and give us your peace. Amen.
Reverend Williams. Goodbye, United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. This is on agenda items only. I don't have anybody that has signed up on the sheet, but is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to counsel on an item on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Meeting agenda approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the meeting agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, next we have a character education proclamation for Canaya Roden, Beaufort Middle School.
Move accepted.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Canaya, you want to meet me down in front?
Whereas the character education movement reinforces the social, emotional, and ethical development of students, and whereas schools, school districts, and states are working to instill important core ethical and performance values, including caring, honesty, diligence, fairness, fortitude, responsibility, respect for self and for others. Character education provides long-term solutions of moral, ethical, and academic issues that are growing concern in our society and our schools. Whereas the 11 principles of effective character include promoting core ethical and performance values, teaching students to understand, care about, and act upon these core values, encompassing all aspects of the school culture, fostering a caring community, providing opportunities for moral action, supporting academic achievement, developing intrinsic motivation, including whole staff involvement, requiring positive leadership for staff and for students, involving parents and the community to assess and result the results of those active improvements. The county, Beaufort County School District's character education program was formed to support parents' efforts in developing good character in their children, and the purpose of the character education program is to integrate good character traits into the total school environment as well as into the community. Whereas each school's counselor identifies a list of character words and definitions deemed important regardless of the person's political leanings, race, gender, or religious convictions. Those words are friendship, kindness, acceptance, courage, tolerance, respect, gratitude, compassion, citizenship, perseverance, honesty, integrity, self-control, forgiveness, responsibility, and cooperation. Whereas Canaya Roden was selected as the winner, Beaufort Middle School is the student of the month. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Beaufort hereby proclaims Canaya Roden, Beaufort Middle School, student of the month. City Beaufort hereby pronounces friendship and kindness as the words for the month of August, and applauds Canaya Roden, the Beaufort County School District, the Beaufort Middle School, for their work and specifically honors Canaya Roden and Beaufort Middle School as the student of the month, set this date in October 2025. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kayla Felix. I'm an eighth grade science teacher at Beaufort Middle, and I have the pleasure of teaching Canaya. So I just wanted to read a little bit of her nomination, just so you all could see why she was nominated. Canaya Roden has shown kindness to her peers and teachers since day one. We can always count on her to help her classmates out with assignments. She also does a wonderful job of managing a group effectively. I have also seen her, oh, sorry. I have also.
Next item on the agenda, if you would, please stand with me for a moment of silence. It wasn't me. I'm not a ventriloquist.
Where's Tony at? Do we need to bring Tony?
No, that was the YouTube video playing. I'm sorry.
Okay.
My apologies.
I was confused. I lost my spot. Okay. I have also seen her step up in so many ways in the halls and cafeteria. Last week, when a student was absent, Canaya volunteered to fill the student in on what they were missing. She also explained to the student how important it was to stay organized. She did this in a kind, calm way. The brief, that brief interaction has helped that student out in so many ways. Canaya greets everyone when coming into her room before starting a conversation. With an adult, she often asks how they are doing. The quality, this quality is something that is not often seen in students her age. Middle school can be challenging, a challenging time for students due to all of the changes they experience. Sometimes it is not only hard for them to be kind to others, but also to themselves. Canaya has shown kindness in every possible way within the last, within the first month of school. This is why we believe she is an awesome nominee for this month's character education student of the month.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a proclamation proclaiming October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Move acceptance.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Someone here from?
Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that domestic violence is a public health issue that impacts our entire community, and is unacceptable that one in four women and one in 10 men will experience violence and/or abuse from an intimate partner during their lifetime. And in fiscal year 2024, there were over 19,000 survivors served as domestic violence agencies served by domestic violence agencies across the state of South Carolina. And whereas Hopeful Horizons, our local children's advocacy, domestic violence and sexual assault victims services organization, assisted 1,562 victims, survivors in 2024, including approximately 500 victims of domestic violence. And whereas we recognize that preventing domestic violence is possible by working toward increasing education about healthy and unhealthy relationships and building awareness of the signs of domestic violence. And whereas Thursday, October 16th, 2025, is Purple Thursday in the city of Beaufort, to help raise awareness of the issue of domestic violence. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Beaufort, South Carolina hereby proclaims October 2025 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The city of Beaufort urges all citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the public health crisis of domestic violence and support those who are working to changing the culture of violence. Sign this date October 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Angela Simmons, and I serve on the board for Hopeful Horizons and on behalf of the staff and the board, and most importantly, the clients and survivors. Thank you so much for recognizing the importance of caring for the women and children in our community. So thank you so much for this proclamation. We definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Okay, next on the agenda is an executive session. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to Title 30, Chapter 4, Section 70A 2 of the South Carolina Code of Law, receipt of legal advice regarding litigation, I make a motion. We go into executive session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're now in executive session.
This is the first from.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Okay, we got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a procedure for consideration of redevelopment incentive program appeal.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt a procedure for consideration of redevelopment incentive program appeal. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, for the public, just to let you know, this is a hearing of the appeal requested by H.D. Acquisition Company of the city's denial of the company's request for reimbursement for property taxes requested pursuant to the Beaufort redevelopment incentive program. The way this is going to take place, the appellant and the will have first to present evidence. We have witnesses, it'll be sworn. Each side will have five minutes to, for a brief opening. Then they can question and present evidence, and then we'll have five minutes for closing. So that... Harvey?
Mayor and counsel, good evening. For the record, I am Bill Harvey, counsel for H.D. Acquisitions Company and David Hornsby, H.D.'s principal. We're here tonight to appeal the decision of Ben Coppidge, city attorney, to deny the application of H.D. Acquisition for the city's redevelopment incentive payments as set forth in the city ordinances on the Refuel Station parcel, which is a part of the larger development of what was once a dilapidated Dixie Trailer Park parcel in Burton. This site is now the thriving home of two hotels, three commercial store sites, and there are more to come. We tried to work with the city manager, Scott Marshall, to get to a yes on this payment, but Mr. Coppidge was steadfast in his denial. So we're here tonight to ask you, city council, to help resolve this. There is significant history to what brings us here tonight, much more than I would care to try to summarize right now. Rather, I would introduce David Hornsby, who was at, who was, and is the boots on the ground for the development of what began in 2018, who will walk you through the history and the decision-making involvement involving this redevelopment incentive promises and payments. After that, we will call Bill Prokop, who was the city manager during this entire development, to tell you the story from the city's standpoint. I have filed a short, brief outlining the legal issues involved, but the history of this, of the decision and the equities involved is what is more important here. At the end of this presentation, I hope you will conclude that H.D. Acquisition has created and will continue to create the development of a former dilapidated site that is now the golden goose, a golden goose for the city in the city's tax base. Rather than argue the city attorney's reasons to say no, this council should honor the promises made to this developer and pay the development incentive reimbursements that brought this entire development to the city of Beaufort. So I introduce David Hornsby, who will be sworn and give his presentation. Thank you.
He gets his five minutes for his opening.
Let me tell you. Thank you, members of council. I'm Ben Coppidge, I'm the city attorney, and tonight I'm representing city staff as the decision-maker to deny the request for reimbursement under former section 5-2024 of the city code. That is the Beaufort Redevelopment Incentive Program. In chapter three, verse five of the Gospel, John Jesus said, "Verily, verily, I say unto thee, except a man be born of water and the Spirit, he cannot enter into the kingdom of God." Jesus has given you two things you must do to enter the kingdom there. One, be baptized, and two, believe in Him. Now, if you haven't done those things and then end up having a conversation with St. Peter at the pearly gates, you're going to want to tell him about all the great things that you did during your life, and that because you did all those great things, it's not fair that you don't get to go in. However, if you can't show St. Peter that you were born of water and of the Spirit, he won't be able to let you in. H.D. Acquisition Company finds itself in a similar situation today. The Beaufort Redevelopment Incentive Program also provides two requirements. This time, it's things that a property owner must, must do to get a tax reimbursement. One, build new construction on its property, and two, pay the taxes attributable to that new construction. H.D. failed to do both of those things, so reimbursement is inappropriate, and under the law, it's impossible. We just can't do it. Give a little bit of background, from 2016 to 2020, H.D. Acquisition Company on the property issue here, and during that entire time, the property was a vacant lot. In 2020, H.D. sold the property to Refuel, who built a gas station three years later in 2023. Refuel then sold the property to Getty Leasing, who then paid the taxes attributable to the new construction, which was that gas station. So other parties, not H.D. Acquisition Company, were responsible for the two things that H.D. had to do to get that reimbursement. And just like that person at the pearly gates, I imagine that H.D. is going to tell you about all the great things that it did and argue that it's not fair that it doesn't get the reimbursement. It will tell you that it's unfair that other property owners were reimbursing it's not. What it won't tell you is that it built new construction on the property or paid the taxes associated with it. And while we can appreciate the good things that H.D. has done, it's a great development out there. Unless those things tell us whether H.D. met the requirements of the ordinance, they are irrelevant to this hearing and can't be considered by council. The main focus for council tonight is whether those two elements were met. One, was H.D. responsible for new construction on this property? And two, did H.D. pay taxes attributable to the new construction? The answer to both is no, so we can't get the reimbursement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coppidge. Bill, you want to swear an witness? Bill, you want to swear in witness?
I've got to swear again, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Hornsby, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, I didn't know we were going to bring Jesus tonight, but I am a Christian. I have been baptized. I do believe in the Holy Spirit. So hopefully tonight, maybe I can share a story with you that will maybe change your mind, and not going to change his, but maybe I can get some equity from y'all in appeal. This incident started back in seventeen, 2017, 2018. I'm a real estate developer, been here for a long time, thirty years. A lawyer by the name of Tom Michael introduced me to Stuart Mitchell, who had a problem with this track being foreclosed on. His father-in-law passed away, and this guy didn't know how to manage the business. And the project turned to Islam, Hobo Village. Mike Sutton, one of the commissioners at the time, was a policeman and urged us to make fast work of this old trailer park and tear it down. And in the meantime, we, I went with Stuart to ask for a couple of months' extension because he getting ready to be foreclosed on. And the guy did. I took the opportunity to DJ the sty, who had just sold twelve hotels in his package, and convinced him this was a great location for to build three new hotels. And it ended up, he put under contract, closed on it. But before he closed, we went to the county under our due diligence period to see, because it was a trailer park, till we make it a commercial zoning, there were some questions, is it residential or commercial? So while I'm at Hillary's desk, we had Tom Michael, the architect, do a once-over kind of land plan, little colored rendering of what our thoughts were, and met with Hillary and their DRT board. I'll try to make this faster for you. I know y'all going to have a late night. Anyway, from that board, we were given the nod to go ahead and move forward on, on the, we didn't have to rezone, just go ahead for working drawings, and go with Beaufort Jasper and pay the fee and come back. In the meantime, we went back and forth with the county and Hillary, and a lady named, who at the time was in charge of industrial development, here, Kim Stappler. And she had an office downstairs here. And I'm also an owner of the Berkshire Hathaway office here in Beaufort. And I was here getting a permit for a sign or something, and I ran into her in the office, and she said, I was at the DRT meeting last week, and I got a suggestion, you need to meet with Billy Kozlin, the mayor, and I think you will be impressed, they have a brand-new plan, this incentive plan, that you can get some of your taxes back under this program. So I met with Billy up here in the lunchroom or in the office little area. Anyway, Billy said, I can't believe he thought this. Anyway, we ended up annexing into the city and with no problem. Meantime, Gary Kubik was the county manager at the time, extremely was upset. He knew that we were going to stay in the county, and he wanted to be able to carve off a piece for the comfort station for the rails of trail. So we had already told him we would be glad to do that, but well, just a minute. I'd be glad to tell you why. It's going to get down to nuts and bolts here in just a second. You need to know the story. We took something, there's a pile of junk, turned it into an asset, and some income, it's an income asset for the city. You can't cut them.
If you'll give the mayor a moment to rule on the objection.
Oh, alright.
Able to resume speaking.
Alright.
And you wanted to get to the point?
Well, what we're talking about here is something they're not, they're a free person. That's available if you have the floor, possibly, probably not, possibly, if the city makes some kind of promise that he was exempt for the H. Yeah.
Well, the, may I? Did you give me a chance to say? My appeal, all counts of this, come down to the wire. Is it?
On the objection, so what you're ruling on is whether it's current testimony?
Yeah, if you can get to the point, in other words, I'll have to let sustain that and, and, or let, let. I'm not overruling, I'm letting him proceed, but you got to get to the point, in other words.
I will.
You're talking, we got all the
I'm just trying to tell you the story.
We're just focusing on this one piece.
I'm going to get down to the point. I'll just get to the chase here. The point is, is we were in incentivized to come to the city. Now, the city, I was fine at the county. I don't have to pay city taxes. I was happy over there. Billy Kozlin and his group incentivized us to come by getting a refund on our, on our property taxes. Later, and we did that. Letter says we, we're entitled to it. Y'all all seen the letter. From that, y'all have received probably, at this point, a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year in property taxes and two hundred thousand dollars a year in bid taxes. So Billy Kozlin and his staff saw the wisdom and the income. We didn't have to come. We were very happy. We were induced to come here, and from that, y'all have profited, and forever you'll do that. We're getting ready to build another hotel, we're going to add another thirty, forty thousand dollars in property taxes. We, we created the jobs. We got seventy jobs out there now. So we've done what the industrial authority wanted. We've done what more than anybody could ever thought of as part of income for the city. I'm saying, we're, because you've promised us, you've told us you would, and I'm here saying, I want to be paid, rather than y'all going to send a check, you're going to send a check to somebody in New York City who had nothing to do, and this thing says a development incentive. It didn't say nothing about building. It's a development incentive, and that's what we were sold. We were promised, we would get money, and now you're saying, we're not going to pay you. We're going to send it to somebody in New York City.
Talking about this one parcel.
One parcel. Right, but I've got two more parcels coming. That's the other part.
Well, that's not what we're discussing.
We got one parcel. I'm looking for a sixty-eight thousand dollar check.
This is the one that we're talking about?
One we're talking about right now. Can I answer any questions? I kind of cut to the chase.
And you want to cross-examine?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hornsby, you just said that you were promised and told you'd get a reimbursement from this property.
Yes.
Do you have a document that shows that?
Most of the time, well, I do. I have this document here. It said I qualify on these three tracks. You've seen that. Right, that I qualify, right. And the mayor. And we can attest, we got somebody here that has knowledge. Not only that, what we, we have spent over four million dollars on the track, developer hats, not the hotels. Those are all eight to ten million dollars a piece. Those hotels wouldn't be there without me. I'm the one that bought it, spent the money to develop it. Because of an attitude between the city and the county at that time, I had to put an eight hundred thousand dollar tunnel in on the, on the trail. If I'd have stayed in the county, I wouldn't have had to have done that. So you've, now you've enticed me to come to the city for tax incentive, which we've done, and you've paid us up until now. And we've been happy. Now, I'm asking for the check to come to HD Company rather than a financing company out of New York City. So, kind of straightforward. I've done my part. I spent the money cleaning up mobile home park, built hotels, created jobs, and an income that will be professional for the city. I think y'all need to do what's there. That's why I'm asking. Be glad to answer any questions. And we're at the pearly gates.
Other, other than that letter that you have there from Mr. Pshaw back in 2019, were there any other promises that were made to you?
Oh, no, other than evidence of facts, they did perform what I asked.
And you said that the, the city enticed you. Is that somebody different?
No, they had the mayor, the city councilman, and city manager, all were part of the meetings to, before the annexation.
Alright.
I was in the city to start. I was incentivized to come to the city. If I did, if I, and I was fine at the county. I'd already had two meetings with Hillary and her crowd.
Alright, and just to be clear, you're not here claiming that you were responsible for building the refuel station, correct?
We sold the dirt to them. We built, we, we gave them a ready site. War, road, sewer, carpet, stormwater, lift station, so it was a developed site.
Great. And, and you're not claiming that HD Acquisition Company actually paid the taxes associated with the improvement? Okay. Alright, that's all I have for you, Mr. Hornsby. I think council can ask any questions they want to ask.
Council, you have any questions?
I have two. So first, just for the record, I wasn't here when all of these other conversations took place, but I do have two questions based on the information that we've seen. The first one is, did HD Company or you, Mr. Hornsby, pay the taxes for which you seek reimbursement?
Oh, the home, two suites, the tree, the other two small buildings. Yes, we paid and got, and got our checks. I came, collected the check with the city, I'm sorry. The city manager. So we have, we have collected on the other sites.
Okay. But not on the site that's currently owned by Getty Leasing?
Right, just getting leasing is a financing conduit for refuel, which allows them to direct expense, rather than going through a depreciation. They get where their monthly payment is, is direct write-off.
And the second question would be, has Getty Leasing been made aware that you're seeking reimbursement for the taxes they paid on that property after it was developed?
No, but I can.
More questions?
And mayor, just one point.
Let me ask you this. If you would pay, I mean, I could go talk to Refuel, we're friends. Even though they don't seem to have a, a leg to, in this fight, which he said they do, but I'd be glad to go to them and say, give me the check. But that's not what we want to do. You've, you've agreed. I've done my part. I bought the trailer park, put in four million dollars worth of assets on the dirt, and built the hotel. I didn't build the hotels. Another company, each, each, each property is owned by a separate LLC, separate entity. So it's, I'm just a site guy. I'm not the builder. And that's what this was, and it, and the attachment to this letter was a site plan.
And just as a point of clarification, I would object to council's consideration of reimbursements that were paid for other properties, but if council is going to take those things into consideration, I would like the opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Hornsby on those.
That's a relevancy objection. Whether or not you're considering the tax payment made or reimbursed on the other parcel.
Well, we're not on the other parcels. We're talking about the refuel property, period. That's what was before us tonight. That's all we're going to consider. I mean, that's what we're here for.
May I ask your question?
Sure.
Mr. Hornsby, would you have done the development work that you refer to from the standpoint of the improvements that you made to develop the property had you stayed in the county?
Yes, we would have done the same thing. We wouldn't have had to spend the eight hundred thousand on the tunnel, but we still would have put the improvements in.
Okay, why, why would you not have to have spent the eight hundred?
Because the county is the one that forced me to do the tunnel, just because they were mad. It wasn't any other thing. The, the trail was already there. They made me tear the trail out, put a tunnel in, and a new trail park, because we came to the city. They wanted a part of this track to be a convenient center, a comfort center for the bikers.
But, but the city did not make you do that?
They didn't make us do that. And this, and we, we came to the city for this incentive, but, you know, the county, because we came to the city, Gary Kubik and his team were upset. So they made us do all kinds of stuff, but.
Thank you.
Now, any other questions, Mr. Hornsby? Uh, Ben, any more? Bill?
Prokop, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Good evening, council. Bill Prokop, president of Beaufort, previous city manager. My purpose of being here and being a witness when I talked to Mr. Harvey was purely to confirm what the city's position was at the time, going back to 2018, 19. I just want to acknowledge that Mr. Hornsby is correct. We did annex. The city wanted to annex that property because it was one of our goals, was to create commercial property and to create revenue for the city, and also to create jobs. Second, he did get a letter. It was reviewed. Well, first of all, he put an application in for the annexation, and he put an application in for the incentive. The incentive, and he was reviewed by our planning department at the time and finance, and he received the letter, which I believe you do have a copy of, that three parcels were approved for the development. Be honest with you, I do not remember anything about building has to go. The development was true. He did do all the development, all the utilities, all the, the tunnel, had to deal with the state for the access road two and off of twenty-one, and also the county to get access roads off their road. So the development work was done by him or his companies. And as I said, in the past, we have paid for the Hilton True, and we paid for the second one, the same incentive program. This, now this is new. It's coming up with the refuel. I was really not involved with that, but everything that Mr. Hornsby said he did was done. It followed all the procedures that we had. And as your attorney did say, he, he did not write, as far as I know, a check for this parcel, but I believe the taxes have been paid. So he was under the impression that as the developer, he would have the right to receive the incentive. I just wanted to confirm, that's where we were. We were following the procedure that we had at the time.
Coppidge, you have it?
Thank you, just very briefly. And Mr. Prokop, you were the city manager at this time, correct?
Yes.
You're not aware, or you don't recall yourself or anybody else with the authority to do so at the city, making a promise that Mr. Hornsby or HD Acquisition Company would get reimbursement if it sold the property and then it was developed, do you?
We never had that discussion.
That's all I have.
Questions from the council?
Uh, yes, I got one. Can you tell us what the qualifications are to get the incentives?
And I, I just, I just object to that.
Okay.
Councilman, it's, it's a pretty long, the whole redevelopment incentive program ordinance is, is fairly long, and that's asking the witness to basically give a legal opinion, so.
Okay. I withdraw my question.
It's, it's up to the mayor, but.
I withdraw, I withdraw my
You do have it in writing. That's why I hesitated because
That's fine.
I couldn't remember.
I withdraw my question.
Bill, any other witnesses?
That's all.
Coppidge?
Just called. Just called David.
Mr. Peshard, can you hear us?
I can.
Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Peshard, this is Ben Cope, good evening.
Good evening.
Were you employed by the city of Beaufort in 2019?
I was.
What was your role back then?
I was director of community and economic development.
And in that role, were you responsible and involved in the implementation of the Beaufort redevelopment incentive program?
Yes.
And during your tenure, did HD, HD Acquisition Company apply for qualification under that program?
They did.
In response to that application, did you send a letter to Mr. Hornsby dated July 24th, 2019?
I did.
Have you been provided a copy of and been able to review that letter?
I have.
And that letter does say that those parcels qualify for the redevelopment incentive program, is that correct?
That's correct.
That letter also says, once your tax bill has been assessed for each parcel, tax notes should include the billing, please submit your receipt with the tax breakdown to the city, is that correct?
That's correct.
Was there any promise in that letter that, uh, HD Acquisition Company would be reimbursed for the taxes paid even if it sold the property without developing it, without building new construction?
There was not.
All right, did you meet with Mr. Hornsby during the application pro- process?
Yes.
Did you make any promises to him that he would receive the reimbursement even if he didn't develop the property or pay the taxes?
Not that I recall.
All right. All right, Mr. Peshard, Peshard, that's, that's all I have for you. If, uh, Mr. Harvey or council has any questions for you, please answer those.
Bill, you want to cross-examine?
David, good evening, Bill Harvey.
David, Bill?
Can you see me?
I can.
Okay. You knew that this property was going to take years to develop, correct?
Uh, yes.
I mean, you knew a hotel was going, you knew that there was going to be, uh, multiple, uh, development sites, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, you knew that Mr. Horns, Hornsby and his company, uh, had to put in all the infrastructure, correct?
I can't remember the details, um, but I think, I think that's correct, yes.
Okay, and that included water, sewer, roads, easement access off, off of the highway, you know, all of, all of the necessary development steps, correct?
Correct.
Because that's what you did, I mean, you, you actually monitored all that while it was, while you were with the city, correct?
My staff did, yes.
Yes, and, and did Mr. Hornsby develop the parcels that are subject here today without, without building the vertical buildings? Did he, did he put in the, the curb cuts, the gutters, sewer, uh, everything with regard to the property?
Uh, I personally didn't verify that, uh, but this, my staff, you know, they are the ones that do the inspections on that, and, um, so I believe he did, um, yeah.
And, and the, the, the flat, the city has to stamp a development flat, correct?
Correct.
And do you know that, uh, the city stamped this flat as approved?
Uh, yes, so before, before any, before any, um, construction can take place, the development plan has to be approved, and, uh, all the reviewers have to provide their stamp that it meets the, uh, local and the state requirements.
Have you seen the flat that was stamped by the city for HD acquisitions for the refuel parcel? I've sent that to you, correct?
Uh, yes, you did.
And, and that was approved by the city in, on June 23 of 2000, correct?
Uh, I don't have it in front of me, let me see.
And, and it shows all the curb cuts and the sewer, um, all the develop, all the pre, pre-vertical construction development, uh, building that has to occur, it shows that on this flat, does it not?
I don't have it in front of me, but I imagine it does.
And your understanding is Mr. Hornsby and his company did that prior to the vertical construction?
Yeah, they would, that's, that's normally the procedure, you do the horizontal and lay the utilities prior to putting in, uh, the vertical.
We, yeah, and we would, uh, Mr. Mayor, we made this part of the record, I think it's already part of the record. Okay, thank you, thank you, David.
Yes.
Questions from council? Guard? Any other witnesses on your side? Okay, any from you, Bill?
We have, we have none. That's, that's our presentation.
Okay, you want to follow up with your closing arguments? I'm going to stay.
You know, I think the, the, we can curse the word development from now until the cows come home, but, you know, what is, what, what, what constitutes taking a dilapidated trailer park and creating what we have here just down the street? What constitutes the word development? It's a development incentive. Mr. Hornsby and his company bought the land, they put in, you heard him testify, put in four million dollars of infrastructure into all the sites. He did everything other than come out of the ground and go vertical. Um, and he was, he was, he did that and came into the city, so the city is now receiving the tax benefits of, of his work. Came into the city upon the incentive of these tax incentives, that's what he, he just testified to. And all he's doing is he's asking for this, for, for this council to fulfill its promise to him when he came into the city. He didn't have to be in the city. He wouldn't have had to pay the city, city taxes. He wouldn't have had to deal with the, the, the incentive program. But he did. He was promised that he would, and he, we're just asking for the, the council to fulfill the promise that was made to him. I would, again, I know that's not, not before us today, but we have two other parcels right behind us, we have another hotel that's coming out of, uh, out of the ground. And, you know, I mean, all of this was done upon the incentive that he was promised eight, seven years ago. This is not something that, that takes place overnight, it doesn't take place, you know, in a month, two months. So that's all we're asking for today. Thank you very much.
Cope?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fortunately, we don't have to parse the meaning of the word development, that's not what is at issue here. Uh, the, the code from back in 2019 requires new construction on the property, not just development, so, and it tells us what new construction is. And that's construction of new buildings, new buildings, not infrastructure, new buildings on previously vacant sites. It's been Mr. Hornsby's testimony tonight that he did not build new construction on this site. So unfortunately, we can't give the reimbursement. Mr. Harvey and Mr. Hornsby have continually referred to promises that were made. Mr. Hornsby, though, testified that no such promise was made. Mr. Prokop and Mr. Peshard testified that no such promise was made. Uh, so that doesn't give us any kind of workaround that wouldn't allow us to avoid the ordinance. And of course, I'd love to see Mr. Hornsby get sixty-eight thousand dollars, I'd like to have it. I'd like all of the residents of Beaufort to have sixty-eight thousand dollars, but we just don't have the legal ability to do that to them, and we can't make an exception just for Mr. Hornsby. He would have to comply with the ordinance, which unfortunately did not happen, so. Uh, I would just ask that council find that denial of the reimbursement was appropriate, thank you.
Bill, you want to rebuttal?
I'll rebuttal.
Okay. All right. Need somebody to make a motion to either grant the appeal or to deny the appeal, do I have such a motion?
Uh, Mayor, I'd make a motion that we deny the appeal for the following reasons. I have the redevelopment incentive program ordinance in front of me. Under section five dash 2021 definitions, property owner is defined, for the purposes of this article, any person, persons, or entity with legal title to the property in question will be deemed the property owner. Section five dash 2022 general provisions, under subsection B qualification for the program, it states, no person or entity other than the qualifying property's bona fide owner may receive any reimbursement for taxes paid. No property may qualify for the program more than one time, or under more than one section. Under subsection F reimbursements by the city, it states, in no event will the city's development incentives to any property owner exceed the city's projections or actual payments made to the city by that property owner. And under subsection five dash 2024, new construction and redevelopment in corridors, it states, the city will pay the property owner for all such real property taxes, which the property owner will pay, which are attributable to the qualifying new construction for a maximum period of three years upon the owner's receipt of certi- certificate of occupancy for that newly constructed building, or that area of the previously existing commercial building, which was renovated, improved, and/or added. Therefore, the ordinance does not justify the request for reimbursement in this case.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, we'll go call the vote. All in favor to, uh, the, the motion to deny the appeal, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Okay, the appeal is denied. Consent agenda? Have a motion to.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next to the minutes, work session and regular meeting on September 9th, 2025?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve the minutes of the work session and regular meeting on September 9th, 2025. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is, uh, minutes of the special joint workshop of council with the waterfront advisory committee of nine twenty-four, twenty-five. So moved?
Second.
Motion and second.
As I was not present.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's your excuse on that one. Okay, next is old business, in ordinance for the lease of commercial space that is part of real property owned by the city of Beaufort, South Carolina, located at 500 Carteret Street, Sea Island Insurance Group LLC, this is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the lease of commercial space at 500 Carteret. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Wait, there was discussion for the item, right? Not to, okay.
For this item.
Yeah, I have discussion for this item, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, so, last time when we discussed this, we talked about, you know, bringing up to, a little closer to market rate, which I see reflected in this ordinance. But what we also talked about was the length of time and some of the reasons for why it may be appropriate for us not to sign longer leases. I'm still of the opinion that, um, we directly put ourselves in competition with the, the private sector, especially by signing long leases, and, and this one doesn't reflect any of that conversation, because if I'm reading this right, this is a two-year lease agreement that has two renewal periods of two years, so a total of six years' time built into this lease agreement, and if we're currently going to charge twelve hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-seven cents, what it looks like, um, and then that increases by three percent annually for, for six years, at the end of this six-year lease, they'd be paying probably fourteen hundred dollars-ish in that range. I, I still feel like that, um, is not in the best interest of our, us as a city, uh, but also it, it allows us to continue to compete with, with those who, who carry higher cost and own properties that they intend to lease out just the same. To me, if we are going to own 500 Carteret Street, having a landing pad for which startup businesses can get their feet underneath them, maybe rent for a little bit less than market until they can find something else, um, is, is more appropriate than signing six-year lease agreements, um, which at that time, six years from now, I'd imagine that's grossly under market value. But at any rate, uh, if this is what is on the table right now, I can tell you that I would be voting against this, because I am not in favor of a six-year lease.
Would you like to make an amendment?
I, I would.
Okay. I'll entertain an amendment.
So I move that we amend this lease agreement to reflect a one-year lease agreement with the option to extend one time for an additional six months.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Now we'll vote on the amendment. Uh, all in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, then the ayes have it, okay. Okay, next is new business, this is a request for.
Wait, don't we have to vote on what we're going to do?
Go back to the original.
Yes.
You're correct. Okay, all in favor of the original, um, ordinance to lease this commercial space for two years at 500 Carteret with extensions? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Request for cosponsorship of Whitehall Park from Beaufort Garden Club to host the Wild Wonders for Kids from the Woods to the Waves on Saturday, March 28th, 2026, nine AM to one PM with a rain date of Saturday, April 25th, 2026, from nine AM to one PM.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and second, uh, any discussion?
You may not have to talk tonight at all.
You not have to, but if you'd.
Okay, if you want to talk or not, talk.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
No, it's just a question of co-sponsorship from the Beaufort Garden Club, which is a nonprofit, to use this to, uh, their ideas to get children away from their screens, and to get out and enjoy nature more than, uh, sitting behind watching TikTok, or any other app.
Question, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh, next is, uh, Main Street Beaufort in partnership with the Freedom Arts District, request waives of noise ordinance, temporary sign permit, vendor coverage, including the group.
You jump, you jump.
Did I just?
Yeah, B.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, request for Main Street Beaufort cosponsorship, waiver of police service fees and drinking in public for boutique crawl Thursday, April 23rd, from five PM to eight PM.
Mayor, Mayor, real quick, I, I apologize, I'm going to recuse myself from this one, I do have my recusal statement here. Uh, my, my wife owns Rooted, and she's actually. My my wife owns Rooted and she's actually helping put this together, so I don't feel like it's appropriate for me to weigh in.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Go Sarah, go ahead and let us-
Good evening, mayor and council. The boutique crawl is a merchant-led event that is scheduled for October twenty-third from five to eight PM. The event encourage encourages visitors to shop and explore downtown businesses during a fun Halloween-themed evening. While VIP tickets are available for purchase and include a swag bag for individuals that purchase that ticket, put together by merchants. Participation in the event is not limited to the VIP ticket holders. The public is welcome to visit and enjoy the event as well. They're requesting a cosponsorship from Main Street Beaufort along with a waiver of drinking in public and a waiver of police service fees. And I do have an event organizer here to answer any questions as well.
Any discussion, comments?
A question. As I've been the longstanding council member opposed to the waiver of of staff fees associated with events. Chief Price, if I could put you on the spot, do we have any idea what kind of police presence and or additional cost to staff that we're talking about for the boutique? This is not the first time that we've done this, right?
This event has been put on in the past and just has not been brought to council.
Because we didn't ask for waiver of anything or alcohol?
Yes.
Got it, okay. Any ideas from the standpoint of?
Need to come up.
Okay. That's good.
Got a quick question for the applicant. Never mind, never mind. I withdraw.
You need to leave the room.
Oh, he just shot me with something.
Yes, Neil, I will bring you all the chance to retire.
We just talking about parliamentary procedure here?
Yes, we were. I withdraw.
All right, man, please, please continue.
Any other discussion? Okay. I'll call the question, any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. That passes. Next is Main Street Beaufort in partnership with Freedman's Arts District, request waivers of noise ordinance, temporary sign permit fee, vendor coverage, including the group event business license fee for Artist Sunday on November third, twenty twenty-five, from twelve to four PM. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Well, Tara, go ahead and tell us about it, this is the new.
Yes, Artist Sunday is going to be held at the Historic Arsenal on Saturday, November thirtieth, from noon to four PM. This year's event is a partnership between Main Street Beaufort and the Freedman's Arts District. The event will activate the arsenal with a makers market and will also connect downtown businesses and galleries through an interactive public art experience that we're doing this year. We are requesting waivers of, for the noise ordinance, vendor coverage, including the group event business license fee and the temporary sign permit fee.
Any discussion? We're talking about the art.
Yeah, but I mean, what, the group event business license is a, is the peddler, that's the the outside vendors that come in and we do it under the umbrella?
The umbrella.
And and the temporary sign permit fee, what does the temporary sign permit fee cost?
I'm not sure.
It's okay.
Can't be much.
It's not that.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is a resolution for the formation of a special purpose committee to advise city council regarding advancing initiatives in the historic district by the city of Beaufort, South Carolina. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second.
All right. So this is a, after the work session, we kind of changed this resolution to add a kind of an inverted committee that puts the citizens with five members and then four members, from one member from the HBF, one member from Freedman's Art District, one, the chairman of the HRB, the chairman of the planning commission, and the goal of the task force is really to advise you on policies of the historic district. But the idea is, is to try to actually have the citizens of the historic district, especially the Northwest Quadrant, be a major part of this and be the majority of the board. So that makes sense.
Want to have any questions?
I do have one point of clarification. So in the, on your packet, it would be page one eighty-one. In the background information, it states expand to nine members, include five members from the community, include lose two, two members from the Northwest Quadrant, include the chair of the HRB, comma, planning commission, and then include a representative from HBF and Freedman's Arts District. I got that. Then you go to page one eighty-nine, the resolution, and it says the historic district task force shall be constituted of nine voting members as following. One member of the historic district review board to be appointed by the majority vote of the board. One member of the planning commission to be appointed by the majority vote of the commission. And so that says two different things. One of them says the chair, and one of them says it will be an appointment from that body by the majority. I am in alignment that it should probably be an appointment by the majority of that board. But just for the sake of clarification, I'd like to know, what what are we passing here tonight?
Well, you're passing the resolution, which was the majority vote of the-
Okay.
Board, and I think that's, yeah, my fault on the memo.
So the, for, so for the record, it will be the one member from that body appointed by the majority vote?
That's right.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yeah, we'll have public comment on that, is any public comment regarding this? Tell me. Please give us your name and address. For the record.
And my name's Mike Toney. I am chairman of the design and planning commission. I'm sorry, I got a frog in my throat. I would like to ask that we add Bill Bardenwhopper to this group. And the reason is because he is a land attorney. As you may recall, this all started back during the retreat that y'all had. And the questions related to the code came up. And then I suggested that I get together with the chairman of the historic review board and that we get together and put together something that we could use to move forward with the code that made sense. That kind of morphed into this task force, which we have been having informal meetings with a group of people. I think that having a land attorney involved in the group would be a tremendous asset to the group. Now, he could be a member or he could be an ad hoc member. So he would be non-voting, but there to give us advice as we proceed with our discussions with this. So that would be my request.
Could he be appointed by a majority of the planning commission group?
Oh, certainly, he could, he could be that as well.
I would suggest that he be a non-voting, so you don't have a-
Are you making an amendment?
Yeah, I guess I could make an amendment that I would be in favor of expanding it and adding a-
That's right, sure.
But it'd be a non-voting member, so you keep a hard number of voting purposes.
Yeah, and I think that would be fine, I've had that discussion with him, and I think-
I'll second that.
He's good with that, too.
As an ex officio member, we're okay? Did we do something procedurally wrong? We're just amending.
So is the, the motion is to add, right now, the vice chair of the planning commission as an ex officio member to this body?
With his background, yes.
Cause his background.
Got it.
Right.
Non-voting.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the amendment, all in favor, or just any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Now back to the original. All in favor of the amendment to authorize a resolution to-
Resolution is amended.
Yeah, it's amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes. Next is a resolution updating the city of Beaufort compensation classification plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to update the compensation plan. Alan, you want to give us a little brief overview?
Yes, sure can. Good evening, mayor and council. The city engaged management advisory group to conduct a comprehensive classification and compensation study to evaluate current practices and provide recommendations for improvement. Also referred to as MAG, they completed their study and presented the file report dated July twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, which outlined findings, recommendations, and implementation strategies to enhance the city's compensation structure and classification system. A copy of the file report from MAG study is included as attachment to this report. City staff analyzed the study's results and presented reviews and recommendations to city council for discussion in two separate public work sessions. Through those discussions, the consensus of city council was to adopt a substantially based upon recommendations from the management advisory group with specific modifications designed to provide the city with a competitive advantages in recruiting and retaining certain classifications. The resolution presented for consideration memorializes a classification and compensation plan reflective of staff's understanding of the will of council. Have any answer questions you may have?
Any questions?
Did you ever do a side-by-side on the incentive, the retention incentive that was provided in the report and then what we currently do? Sorry.
Specifically referring to the longevity?
Uh, yeah, so the retention incentive that was, that came from the study, did we ever compare ours to that, just to see what?
Not yet, I'm not. I can start working on that.
I have no other questions.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Our next is an ordinance to amend the city of Beaufort ordinance twenty twenty-five slash thirteen regarding fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. City of Beaufort budget to provide for the revenues and expenditures of general fund, parks and tourism fund, stormwater fund, and American Rescue Plan Act Fund. This is first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to amend the ordinance. Alan, you want to give us a-
Yes, little background kind of goes into the, based on the MAG report. This budget amendment is for scenario number three, which is comprised of MAG's recommendation with department input adjustments. And this show a thousand dollars for police, fire, and public works, except for department directors and city manager adjustments. And here is, we kind of, I broke it down by the various funds. General fund, parks and tourism, stormwater, and American Rescue Plan Act Fund. The guy showed the overall impact, it would be on our, this fiscal year. Overall, the impact is, I think, about eight hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. Happy, certain questions you may have?
Questions?
Eight hundred fifty-two thousand, sorry.
Okay, hearing no questions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ordinance passes. Next is authorization to allow the city manager to enter into a contractual agreement for parking management enforcement services.
So moved.
Motion and second. Alan, you gonna?
Yeah, let's give her a viable background. Yeah, the city solicited requests for proposals back in April, we received four bids. The cost for these services is incurred as a reduction to gross parking and citation revenues. Our fiscal twenty-six budget net revenues is two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And the, the committee was unanimous in their selection of Metropolis based on the costs, also the soft costs of transition to a new vendor, potentially parking policy changes and other factors as the lowest, most responsive bidder for these services. Any string questions you may have?
Any questions?
My question is, I remember stating previously, it was important to, for me at least, to understand what it would be like for the city to roll this into their operations internally and manage parking, whether that was through the hiring of, you know, retired police officers or whatever that is. Did we ever look at the option to do this in-house opposed to contracting it out?
I don't believe we provide that.
Okay, so for that reason, I'm going to be voting against this because I feel like it would have been prudent for us to at least understand that. I know there may be a difference in opinion as far as the attorney general's statement on this and the city's position, and I understand that. I do think that regardless, it would have been prudent before signing a contract to to understand what it would have looked like to manage that internally, so.
Any other comments? I tend to agree for next contract year, we definitely look into that.
This is a, a three-year contract with extensions for years four and five.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yep, nay.
Okay, next is authorization to allow the city manager to enter into a contractual agreement for information technology support services. The motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
There's motion and a second. Alan, you want to walk us in this?
Yeah, the city solicited requests for proposals back in May of twenty twenty-five, we received five bids at the end of May. They are from Gen Sigma, Harlan Technology, InterDev, KML Computer Services and Tech, NIC Ally. And the selection committee interviewed the top three candidates. And our recommendation is, was unanimous in favor of InterDev. They offer the the best services for them, although they are the highest cost that has a value partner with the city. They provide a high level consultation supportive for network and software design and security and end-user workstation and troubleshooting. And also they were able to commit two full-time employees at our location. The other, the other responses did not include that.
Comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Next is a resolution authorizing the Beaufort History Museum to handle the auction of historical items in the possession of the city of Beaufort for the proceeds of such auction to be paid to the Beaufort History Museum for its services and disposing of the surplus historical items and furthering historic preservation and education.
So moved.
Okay, got a-
Second.
Motion and second for the resolution.
Good evening, mayor and council, this is the same issue, our same item that we discussed in work session last month. We reviewed a list of items with the Beaufort History Museum that the city owns, that we were discussing the possibility of them actually handling for auction and then using the proceeds to put back into the Beaufort History Museum operations. This is similar to what we did last year for this event as well. The list of items that they are proposing to auction was reviewed last month by council. And I believe any necessary adjustments have been, have been made. Are there any questions?
Questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is a resolution updating the SOP manual for city council, boards, commissions, and committee meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. JJ, you want to give us an overview?
All right, good evening, council. This is a update to the city council standard operating procedure manual that was done earlier or adopted earlier this year, or late last year. This addresses specifically, I apologize, my computer's not wanting to work, it's on page seventeen or eighteen in your packet. This specifically addresses council appointments to advisory bodies. This came up as we were looking at the waterfront advisory committee. This was some language that, again, this entire manual was pulled from other resources. And I believe we just missed this when we were taking it out. And it just specifically authorizes the council to- And it just specifically uh, authorizes the council to um, uh, have council members that serve on advisory bodies if they're appointed by the council. Uh, just again, an update on there, and it uh, just moves some of the other language around a little bit. So it takes out that under section G, item one, takes out that in accordance with the provisions of state law, council members shall not be appointed to city advisory bodies concurrent with their term of office as a council member. And I don't remember where that language got pulled from, because there's not a, a prescription against that here in, in South Carolina. And I think it was just something that we missed when we were doing that final cleanup. And it moves the next paragraph down and makes that, that next paragraph, uh, section one. Any questions about that portion?
Any questions from council?
Now, there is, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could for just a moment, there is another potential update that would have to be made by motion if council wanted to do that, that I spoke to uh, to the city manager about. And we wanted to talk to you about while we're doing this update, I know he has spoken to all of you about the possibility of uh, changing our meeting schedule, which is section eight point zero one on page thirty one in the online version, page thirty in the printed version. Uh, there's been some discussions about changing the meeting schedule to have our regular council meeting continue to be on the second Tuesday of the month, but move it forward to six P M and not having a work session beforehand so that we're not as constrained. It's not quite a marathon night. And then having the uh, work session on the fourth Tuesday and having it a little, at the same time at five P M, that way uh, there's some separation there. Um, again, that's not been proposed, so um, you would need to make a motion to uh, amend and add that language, but we thought it was appropriate to have that discussion here while we're doing this update, and that would most likely go into effect January twenty twenty six when the city manager works with the clerk to publish the twenty twenty six meeting schedule.
Discussion on that?
I, I, I personally would not be in favor of that, that would be the equivalent of going back to having two meetings a month.
Okay.
I would be in favor of that because I think that we do have enough to discuss that it would be prudent to add an additional work session.
I, I think we, when, when we have, in the past, when we've needed an additional work session because the urgency or required that, we have that ability to do that.
Yeah.
So we would do it on a, as needed basis versus encumbering another, basically another week. Because when you do that, it pretty much cuts out any opportunity to do anything um, well.
I think the difference in my mind though is, is one, it's, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this change, but on one hand, it gives us the ability to know that we're having a meeting so we can prepare for the fact that there will be a work session. Whereas now you look at it, and yes, that's factored in that we could call an additional meeting if the need exists. But we really haven't done that too much, and there have been several instances where we've gotten to the backend of a work session and we don't get to discuss an item, and so then it moves to the next month. Today's a perfect example. So we, we're, we're almost there, but we have an additional item on the backend that people come for, that we don't get to discuss, that then we just push to the next meeting, and I think that if we were to have that meeting factored in on the fourth Tuesday that we planned for in advance, then it would be a little bit easier than trying to call a meeting just because it's built into the ordinance and you have the ability to do so. That's just how I'm, how I see it.
Yeah, and I was.
You have no time restraint. The meeting would go.
It would have no time restraint because you wouldn't have a regular session on the backend.
And I was in favor of that as well, um, to have it so that we can vet these things because we are not getting through our work sessions on time. We're not vetting them enough and, and getting enough input from the public. So I would prefer to have one regular council meeting, starting at six, getting all that work done, and then having the work session start at five o'clock, is it?
But it was, yeah, continue to start at five on the fourth Tuesday is what.
Go until we're done.
If needed.
If, well, yeah.
If needed, you never know.
Needed.
Well, I'm sure, but you never know.
We need to have.
What is being repo- proposed, JJ?
So the proposal was to modify section eight point zero one to have council meetings, uh, regular council meetings on the second Tuesday at six P M, and to have your regular work sessions on the fourth Tuesday at five P M. And then keep all of the other language the same. By ordinance, you can have meetings whenever you need to call them on a Tuesday.
If we have to do a special meeting, we can, but this is just a way of setting it up because I'd like us to vet through the, the work sessions better.
Well, there would be no reason to have a special section if we have a un- unlimited time session on the fourth.
You're allowing, you're allowing to have that if you need it.
And then again, this would go into effect January twenty twenty six with the publishing of the twenty twenty six meeting schedule.
Someone to make the emotion to amend.
I think you could make a, if somebody wants to make a motion, you could make the motion to adopt the changes as presented verbally by staff.
I would make a motion to adopt the changes as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Eyes have it.
You'll need to.
Need to go back to the original.
Back to the original question now? Yes, sir.
Okay, um, back to the original um, resolution to update the SOP manual for city council, boards, commissions, and committee meetings as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, next is.
One opposed?
I'm sorry, can you say that?
This is, yeah, adopt a motion.
This is on the original question, so adopting the uh, SOP manual with the amendment now?
As amended.
No.
And next is an ordinance to update the operation of golf carts within the city of Beaufort pursuant to uh, state statute fifty six dash two dash ninety of the South Carolina code. This is first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to update.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, this, this ordinance was approved last month as it's uh, presented to you tonight. We, as we started looking at the registrations and how some of the other jurisdictions were uh, doing this around us, we realized that the uh, the staff time and the printing time, uh, the inspection time that goes into uh, permitting the golf carts uh, outweighed what we would receive on fees. Uh, nobody else around us is doing the inspections or the permitting portions of the uh, the changes that you have proposed today are to uh, change the language and definitions of permittee to a person holding a valid uh, South Carolina D M V permit that would be displayed on their vehicle. And then to take out section eight dash six zero zero five, which is the permit and registration part. So we would rely on the D M V permitting, and it just clarifies that uh, formal enforcement beyond warning tickets will not be uh, engaged in until after December thirty first, twenty twenty five. This keeps all of the requirements that we have in place, the additional requirements of all the passengers being secured, uh, receipt belted, the equip, equipping the functioning headlights, taillights, turn signals, and reflectors meeting city vehicle code. Uh, it just doesn't have a local registration portion. Um, and that's just, that's the staff recommendation from a logistics and a cost standpoint to make those, those changes, and we'll continue to work on the public education and uh, the, the non-formal enforcement.
Okay. Right? Any other question? Okay, all in favor of the ordinance to update the operational golf course within the city of Beaufort, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, council.
Opposed, okay. Thank you, JJ. Okay, next we have public comment on non-agenda items. I have two people who've signed up. The first one is Dennis Ross, Thirteen Ridge Road on Cat Island. Good to see you, Dennis.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor. And the rest of you as well. Uh, my name is Dennis Ross, I live on Cat Island, uh, which is obviously not within the city limits. But I'm here to, uh, here tonight to discuss an issue that does not only affect us on Cat Island, but also the remainder of Beaufort County and the city of Beaufort as well. And that's obviously Upper Kane and Lower Kane Island. Uh, as many of you know, uh, there's a thirty-year-old legacy planned unit development and an associated development agreement, uh, one that allows no public input. And it's still in force today. That agreement permits Upper Kane to build by right roughly four hundred and forty-five homes and commercial facilities. Lower Kane may also construct by right two hundred and seventeen homes, a resort hotel, restaurants, and an event venue, and that's not all. Cat Island itself is adding another forty to sixty homes because that's another legacy pud, and they can continue to build out there as long as they have the space to do it. At the very end of Island Causeway, which all these developments are going to use, is a development called the Marshes. And they have the ability to also add another sixty-seven homes. By right, that's nearly eight hundred homes, all funneling traffic onto a narrow two-lane causeway, and then onto Ladies Island Drive. Yet under the existing agreement, there is no traffic impact analysis required. To their credit, the developers of Upper and Lower Kane Island did commission a traffic impact analysis, or T I A, as a goodwill gesture, if you will. The first version came out in October twenty twenty four, and then through numerous revisions of jostling with the county and the city and the staff, uh, it led to a final report which came out in June of twenty twenty five. City requested reviews from both S C D O T and the county's traffic engineers, but their findings differed. And several inconsistencies stood out. For instance, the traffic impact analysis uses a forty-five mile an hour speed limit on Ladies Island Drive, can you believe that? When I asked S C D O T about this, they confirmed that that speed is advisable, it's, it's, it's an advisory only and it's unenforceable. On top of that, S C O D says that the average speed on Ladies Island Drive from Reba Road up to Sam's Point Road, anybody want to take a guess? Sixty-eight miles an hour. I personally have been in an accident on that road because somebody plodded into it. A number, uh, and they also assume a two point seven five percent traffic growth rate, a number that completely ignores the growth that's going on in Beaufort County right now. And these numbers are in the traffic impact analysis, they're used in the transportation engineering manuals, but they're not realistic at all. It's all science and it's all theory. The county engineers raised at least fourteen documented reasons why this traffic impact analysis is inaccurate. Originally, Upper Kane construction was limited to sixteen homes per the site plan. The revised traffic impact analysis approved by S C D O T, mind you, allows up to sixty-two homes, seven thousand square foot restaurant on Upper Kane and those two hundred and seventeen homes on Lower Kane Island before even requiring any traffic mitigation on Ladies Island Drive and Island Causeway and Meridian, period, end of story. The developers, once again, acting in goodwill, have since proposed a temporary stoplight at the end of Island Causeway to be installed at their expense until S C D O T can enact, can enact a permanent fix. But according to S C D O T, temporary can mean up to ten years. It's something we'll have to live with while the county continues to grow and the city continues to grow. S C D O T later suggested that Upper and Lower Kane coordinate mitigation, stating that the traffic signal mitigation may be shared between the two developments, using a cumulative forty-unit minimum to begin permitting. Yet each development will retain the sixty-two unit maximum until the signal is under construction. Still, the review shows no full understanding of the current future traffic patterns along Ladies Island Drive. And because of those thirty-year-old agreements, city planners have been allowed very little input. These outdated deals haven't kept pace with the real growth, real traffic, or real safety needs. City planners have to be a part of this process, and I know they're doing their best, but they're hamstrung by this legacy pud. To slow this growth until realistic traffic solutions are discussed, and they need to be openly discussed with public oversight. What's most concerning, these developments are not subject to public review or comment. And we understand why they're excluded. It's because of a thirty-year-old agreement. Can we honestly continue, or can we honestly justify continuing this process without transparency, accountability, or community input? Delaying. I've got a little bit more to go. Just a little.
You can be quick.
I will. Delaying the fact-based mitigation puts residents, commuters, and visitors at unnecessary risk. The lack of oversight or a citizen review process leaves public safety hanging in the balance. Based on the updates to Beaufort City Code, it's not just reasonable, it's an absolute necessity to conduct a new, independent traffic study, one that uses accurate data, realistic growth projec- projections, verified speed limits, and most importantly, public input. God forbid it takes a tragedy, an injury, or worse, a loss of life at the intersections of Ladies Island Drive, Meridian Road, or the Island Causeway, to finally prompt the action that should have already been taken. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Ginger Marshall from the Beaufort County EMS.
Ginger. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this time. My name is Virginia Marshall. I work with Beaufort County EMS. And it's that time of the year again. Four years in a row now, I've come to you guys to bring you some information about our Beaufort County First Responder Food Drive. And you should have a flyer in your pamphlet, yes? And so just to bring you up to date on some of the most recent statistics, in twenty twenty four, in Beaufort County, we had about eight point one percent of the residents who are struggling with food insecurities. And what that means is it's difficult for them to put food on their tables. They have to make decisions. Do I feed my family? Do I get my medicines to treat my diabetes, my heart condition? And we shouldn't have to be that way. And some other information I found is in twenty twenty-three, there is thirteen point five percent of American households affected by food insecurities, and that was up from twelve point eight percent in twenty twenty-two. So roughly about one in seven individuals nationwide are affected by that. I wish I could bring you more recent up-to-date in twenty twenty-four, but the presidential administration that we currently have has not put anything out, and I'm not expecting to see anything in the near future. But after working for over a decade with uh, different first responder agencies, we came together and we decided to create the Beaufort County First Responder Food Drive. So your local fire departments, my department, EMS, and your local police departments have come together, and from November first through December twelfth, we are collecting non-perishable, in-date food items. By in-date, I'm requesting items to be in-date into the new year. Um, the first year that we did this, we had a huge turnout of food donations, but we had to throw away about a quarter of them because they were severely outdated. So um, we request that those food items be in-date into the new year. And there's going to be boxes located throughout Beaufort County. In the city of Beaufort, they are going to be located here in your administration building, down by the planning office, and your police department has one, and then uh, the city fire department, Station Three, is also going to have one. And then various EMS departments and other fire departments in the county. We're going to collect until December twelfth, and then the following week, we are going to distribute between Help with Beaufort and Bluffton Self-Help. Those two agencies have been in existence for over twenty years. And some of the statistics I got from Help with Beaufort is that in September, they saw an increase of six hundred and twenty-four individuals that they were assisting. So that brings their total to two thousand four hundred and sixteen individuals that they're assisting. Bluffton Self-Help is also seeing an increase uh, from fifteen to twenty percent of people that they're helping from last year, and it's only going to get worse as you have seen going to the food markets, how high things are getting. So I, what I ask of you is to take a moment when you go out and speak to your constituents, go to your civic groups, churches, to speak about this food drive. Uh, if you have an organization that would like to be a part of it, we'll be more than happy to get a box to them, and we'll come around and collect it until December twelfth, and then we'll split the, what we get between the two agencies and serve it, uh, deliver it to them the following week. Are there any questions from council or the mayor about this program or anything like that?
Y'all going to the churches?
I would like to get some churches involved, yes. I'm going to be reaching out to some private citizens, but if you have someone in mind, um, I can leave my email. Um, or I can um, get it with, Tracy has my email so she can get that information to me. That would be most appreciated.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you, June.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Um. Next we have. Sports. Oh, yes, Tracy. Okay. Couple of them, that's fine. Absolutely. Come on. Just give us your name and address when you come to the podium.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate it. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, good evening, Beaufort Council. My name's Finnegan Eby.
I live in Cat Island, twenty-seven Sheffield Avenue. I am here today to address my concerns about the proposed development of Upper and Lower Kane Island. Kane Island is nestled along the marshes of Beaufort, South Carolina. It has always been more than just a place that people like to visit. To me, it is my home. I grew up surrounded by the towering oak trees, the beautiful marshes, and the rhythmic sound of birds and insects that hum with life. Some see the island only for profit, but I urge you to see it for its irreplaceable beauty and ecological value. It is our responsibility as citizens not acquiesce to the demands of Kane Island Development Company, who, mind you, is a company not even local to Beufort, but Alabama. But instead, we need to fight for the Beufort that we want to see tomorrow. We want to see Beufort controlled by local citizens and not outside corporations. I've talked about how I've grown up in this area, and this has allowed me to make many memories in the creeks and channels of Upper and Lower Kane Island. With the installment of the riprap and wooden bulkhead, the natural beauty of the marsh will be tarnished. The bulkheads will speed up the erosion of the marsh. It will harm the creeks I've always loved to explore. Furthermore, the installment of the riprap intensifies instead of solving the problems. Beaufort City Council members, what will you tell your children and your grandchildren when they learn how Beufort used to look? How will they feel when they learn we turned our morals to build another gated community? I urge you to reconsider the amount of riprap and wooden bulkhead the developer desires to install and to please stand up Beufort citizens. Thank you, guys.
Real quick. Here you go.
Yes, sir.
Card.
Thank you.
Card. Let's sit down and talk about it.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mayor, council members. My name is Ed Hancock, and I have lived across the tidal area from Upper Kane Island. I'm going to have to get this a little clearer up. For over fifteen years. Today, extensive work is being done to repair that sea island for development, predominantly home sites. I want to note my concern about one specific aspect of the development of Upper Kane Island, which is now being requested, that being the proposal to install five thousand nine hundred and fifty-one linear feet of riprap, five, uh, four hundred and ninety linear feet of eight-and-a-half-foot wooden bulkheads. All of this is required per the developer due to erosion. It was stated at the public hearing by an engineer associated with the developer that there is a tidal current strong enough to cause erosion. And as proof of erosion, it was noted that there are twenty-three trees that have been undercut. Impplied by the statement is that the erosion issue is significant. Also noted was that other potential solutions were studied. One such solution is the Living Shore Program for erosion control. But it was stated that there is not enough sunlight to keep the plants that would be planted alive. So I figure just about now, you're thinking, okay, it's a big project, but if that's what is needed, then that's what is needed. But I challenge the very basis of the request. It's true that running water causes erosion. But the question is, has it caused erosion so significant that a project of that magnitude, which is with its secondary consequences, is the answer? I haven't heard or found any supporting information that supports that position. Let me go on record as stating that there are at least two publicly available documents separated for about twenty-five years that quote the size of Upper Kane Island. The first is the nineteen ninety-six rezoning request document that states the size of the island as two hundred and eighteen acres. The second document, presented in the early twenty-twenty's as a sales brochure, state the property size is two hundred and seventeen acres. That's no difference at all. That doesn't even include the potential for error in measurement. I have noted earlier, I live directly across from Upper Kane and have not experienced any significant erosion, nor have I noticed any erosion around Cat Island. As for the twenty-three trees, no one has stated how long it took for the undercut to occur. My guess, it's been, and based upon my personal experience, it's been decades. The project will be disruptive to every living thing in that ecosystem. The effect of riprap extends beyond the area upon which it would be applied. It will affect an area significantly beyond the riprap boundary due to its disruptive effect to tides and currents. This will be disruptive to all the intertidal creatures, and beyond that, to the birds and larger fish that feed on those creatures. You may not know this, but the bottlenose dolphins use parts of Kane Island to do strand fishing. This is a type of fishing by an animal, a mammal, that is unique to South Carolina and Georgia's low countries and is a taught, learned technique, passed from mother to child. The area is also regularly used for recreation, boating, fishing, orstering, bird watching, or just some of those activities I see going on almost every day. The proposed project will have a strongly negative impact on these activities as well. If approved, everything that makes the Low Country so special will be affected. I'm not aware of any north of the broad area that has found it necessary to institute such a massive erosion control project. Regulations require the use of the least intrusive option, which of course would be no action. But the concept of Living Shore, which is perhaps the least intrusive, was rejected due to the lack of sunlight. As noted, the development is to be home sites all along the shoreline. The sun issue must be related to the trees on those lots. However, many of those trees will be removed by the light owner to give the homeowner a grassy backyard and a view of the waterfront.
You're over five minutes.
Oh, where have I gone?
Yeah. I'm trying to limit everybody to five minutes. We do have a long meeting, but you can wrap it up.
I will. I believe I have shown that there are certain documents that indicate that erosion is not an excess, that if today nothing is done, there will be a loss of twenty-three trees. But given the massive number of trees being removed to make the development possible, this would seem to be a minor loss. The no-action option is today the only option that makes sense. Thank you.
I have a question, just personally.
Sure.
The, I guess it's the Bureau of Coastal Management. They're in charge of this. Have they approved this?
It has not been approved yet.
Is that who you're going to have to conduct?
I have sent the same information. They had a public hearing, and many speakers spoke out against the project.
Thank you.
But I think that as the leaders of our community, y'all really need to hear the situation.
We're aware of it. Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, hearing none. We're going to move on to reports. City manager's report?
Good evening again, mayor and council. She does not know it yet, but I'm going to start my remarks by recognizing Linda Roper for a recent public commendation letter that praised her professionalism and her customer service. And I'm going to read part of it because I think it's important for everybody to hear this. Dear Mr. Marshall, I am writing to bring to your attention something truly astonishing, something so remarkable, so beyond the pale of ordinary civic experience. You have and your employ one Linda Roper, Director of Downtown Operations, who is not only outstanding and helpful, but a great communicator. When she speaks, people actually understand her, no decoder ring required. I've seen it with my own eyes. She opens her mouth, words come out, and miraculously, the rest of us know what to do. And beyond communication, she's helpful in ways that border on the supernatural. I won't go into the rest of it. In short, Beufort is lucky to have her. She makes the city run smoother, the downtown brighter, and the rest of us feel like we're all in on the joke. Please don't tell her I said any of this. Oops. Linda, thank you very much for your service. I have this letter that I will pass on to you along with a letter from me. I'll give this to you right after the meeting, but thank you very much for making us look good all the time. I want to let everyone know that we're mobilizing this week for the Drainage Improvement Project on Craven and Charles Streets. The staff is proactively communicating with adjacent property owners and business owners ahead of any closures, and they will continue to regularly update them throughout construction to minimize any impacts. I want to thank everybody who made the shrimp festival a success, and I want to single out Linda Roper again because she was very instrumental in that, as well as Alan Iseman and Sandy Rice, the finance staff, the fire department, the police department, Public Works, and many, many other employees who gave their weekend to serve our community. I also appreciate the members of city council who rolled up their sleeves and worked alongside staff selling tickets and doing whatever else needed to be done. Some good news, our police department was recently awarded a federal grant to support our community response team, which should strengthen our ability to connect residents with appropriate services and enhance public safety. I have a few details on this grant award, but a lot of details are lacking because of the government shutdown right now. But we'll get as many details as we can when we can, and I'll update you. I would like everyone to join us for the city's Halloween party at the Waterfront Park on Saturday, October eighteenth, from ten AM to two PM. Trick-or-treating will begin at twelve-thirty PM. We'll have family-friendly activities, and costumes are encouraged. I want to thank in advance our staff and volunteers who always make this a safe and fun event for children and families. I think this is our third year doing this now. Twenty-eighteen, okay. Also, if that's not enough, the following weekend, Beufort County is having a trunk-or-treat event that will be held on Saturday, October eighteenth, I'm sorry, Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from two to five PM at the Charles Lynn Brown Activity Center. It's also a free event that will feature face painting, glow sticks, candy, and costumes. Finally, and this is what I did not want to get to, I want to acknowledge that our deputy city manager, J.J. Suvay, will be departing on October thirty-first. J.J., thank you for your leadership and the many projects, processes, and programs you have advanced during your time with us. On behalf of the staff, we are beyond grateful for your service to Beufort, and we wish you and your family happiness and success as you begin the next chapter of your career. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. For the mayor's report, I'm going to be in the interest of time. I'll be brief, but again, I want to echo what Scott had to say. Unfortunately, I was not able to make the seafood festival. I was shrimp festival, excuse me. I was out of town at the time, but I heard it was a great success. And J.J., good luck in your future endeavors. Appreciate the work you've done here. And I'm going to be very brief. I've attended a lot of meetings and all that, the usual stuff, but I did receive from Dr. Penou a little thing here in appreciation and grateful recognition for the Beufort City Council for the two decades of steadfast partnership, visionary leadership, and unwavering support for USC Beufort. So this is for us. I'm going to pass it around, let everybody take a look at it. I'll leave it with you, Scott. You put in a trophy case or whatever. And that's all I have. I'll start on my right with Councilman Mitchell.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief also, just two items. I was fortunate along with the mayor and Josh to attend the Thirty-Third Annual Beaufort County Youth Conference. This is quite a feat. It was the brainchild of Ms. Carrie Major. And the program's designed to inspire the youth of our community, and she's been doing it. She has a lot of help in making it happen, but I think this is about my third year making comments. And they had a very inspiring speaker, a motivational speaker, a young man. I don't know. He was probably thirty-ish, that would be young for me. Mr. Kyle Green, and he's kind of a local young person, having grown up just across the border there in Jasper County. So yeah, that was very, very inspiring. And secondly, just want to recognize Representative Shannon Erickson, and all she did to bring the Department of Transportation Modernization Ad Hoc Committee to Beaufort High School, I think that was last Wednesday or Thursday. Learned a lot there, and hopefully they learned a lot from the persons who spoke in terms of addressing the concerns regarding transportation in our area. So I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Just very briefly, want to thank staff for shrimp festival was a rousing success. Lots of good shrimp to be had by all. I've been in a number of ripping cuttings through the month and meetings, and did want to mention that I worked with the, I made a presentation to the Cutter Street United Methodist Men's Club, about twenty-two gentlemen about the Waterfront Park and our drainage projects downtown, of which I want to thank Raul for briefing me completely on all the updates that had occurred with reference to the stakeholder meetings so that I knew exactly what direction the pipes were starting from as compared to what the plan says. But that's enough for me.
Far left, Councilman Scolic.
All right. So first of all, I just want to say thank you to J.J. Your contributions that you've made to the city will undoubtedly have a positive impact on us for years to come. So I wish you and your family the best in your next endeavor, but thank you so much for what you've done for the city in your short time here. And then I want to apologize, I was not able to make the shrimp festival this year. My son actually had a follow-up appointment in Atlanta, and so we went there and got a very favorable report. So we were excited about that. And while we were in Atlanta, we saw the aquarium and the zoo. It was my daughter's birthday, so she turned six. And then it was our anniversary on September twenty-ninth, so we tried to just do like a one, two, three punch, get everything knocked out while we were there. Unfortunately, we had to come back a little bit early, so we didn't get to have our anniversary dinner, but we'll make up for that, and I'll just have to answer for it. In keeping with some of the conversations that I've had with constituents and emails that we have received, and then my own thoughts as well, just reflecting where we are as a country, I've prepared some comments that I want to read tonight. "I want to acknowledge the heartbreak we recently experienced in our community, the tragic loss of multiple lives following a senseless act of violence at Willie's Bar and Grill on St. Helena. Our community grieves with the families whose lives have been forever changed, and we stand united in prayer for healing, strength, and peace. What happened on St. Helena is not just another headline. It is a wound in the heart of our home. It's a reminder that behind every act of violence are real people, real families, and generations of pain left in its path. For each time we bow our heads in remembrance, we must also lift our eyes to the future and ask, what can we do? We often speak of the American experiment. It is, in truth, an extraordinary and fragile idea, in agreement among us to govern ourselves through reason, not rage, through ballots, not bullets. The American experiment requires our acceptance of three enduring truths. Pluralism: There will always be others who hold views different from our own. Compromise: Outcomes will reflect many voices. No one's vision will ever be adopted exactly as they desire. Persuasion: If we want to see our values prevail, we must convince others through argument, example, and sympathy, never through fear or violence. This is not easy work. Democracy is, never is, but it remains the most hopeful path humankind has ever created for freedom, justice, and progress. If we want meaningful reform in our schools, our justice systems, our neighborhoods, it begins not in Washington, but right here in Beufort County. Participation is not optional. It is the price of self-government. A major election year is approaching in twenty twenty-six. Eight of the eleven Beufort County seats will be up for reelection. The sheriff is up for reelection, two city council seats, one of which is my own, the superintendent of education, and all seven congressional seats in the state of South Carolina. Carolina. If we want good policy, we must first find and support good people to run for office, people of integrity, compassion, and courage. If we want justice reform, we must start by reforming our participation, showing up, speaking out, and voting with conscience and conviction. The American experiment is an outlier in human history, yet it has proven remarkably resilient. It has unleashed unprecedented freedom, prosperity, and innovation across the world, and when it falters, it contains within itself the means for self-improvement through our voices, our votes, and our shared commitment to a more perfect union. So tonight, let us also pledge to act to build communities where compassion leads, where truth matters, and where every life holds value. Thank you, and may God bless the families of St. Helena and all who call this community home.
I'm going to try to make this brief. Might not be very... First of all, the mayor and I, we went up to Florence for a M.A.S.E. advocacy meeting. We learned a lot there. I had the honor of going to the complete student government class and speaking to the kids, and that was a tough bunch. I mean, they asked a lot of good questions, lots, never let up. Constitution Week in the Waterfront Park, hosted by the local chapter of the DAR, I was there. I was a little disappointed in how many people were not, you know, it was so few people, but it was a very good event to recognize our constitution. I echo Councilman McPhee's comments about the shrimp festival, Downtown Operations, y'all did a bang-up job. Tracy, you were sure selling them tickets. So were you, chief. And you too, Alan. I mean, y'all were just selling them tickets like crazy, and the others I may have missed. But anyway, let's see, finally, I just want to wish J.J. my best, and thanks for all you've done for us, and hope everything goes well for you in the other Carolina. Thank you. And with that, want to make a motion to adjourn. Oh, we got exec... Oh, I didn't know that.
We have another one.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Where is it at?
Very bottom.
Oh, excuse me. Pursuant to Title 30, Chapter 4, Section 70A of the South Carolina Code of Law Discussion Regarding the Purchase or Sale of Property. In pursuant to Title 30, Chapter 4, Section 70A 2 of the South Carolina Code of Law, receipt of legal advice on current pending litigation, I make a motion, we go into executive session. Five seconds. Okay. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal up the saying on. Bye. End of executive session.